And in doing so, we lift up Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Lowry, Councilmember Feller, Councilmember Sanchez, and Councilmember Kern, may grant them wisdom and peace as we lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. We say all these things in your precious name. Amen. All right. Pledge of allegiance. Flag over here. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
At this time, we have a proclamation in honor of Constitution Week, so if all of those people wanted to come forward in recognition of Constitution Week, could please come forward?
I’m Charlotte Boudry, the Regent of the Santa Margarita Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and on behalf of our chapter and the few members that are with us tonight, I thank you for this proclamation. This year, 2018, is the 62nd anniversary of Constitution Week, celebrated annually from September the 17th through the 23rd. It was adopted by the society in 1955 after going through Congress with the signature of President Eisenhower. The final resolution was adopted, signed into public law in August of 1956. Therefore, we Americans will be celebrating the 231st anniversary of the United States Constitution that was signed in 1787, the longest-lasting national constitution in the world that guarantees most of the liberty and the freedoms that we enjoy. This proclamation will be displayed at the Constitution Week brunch, celebrated jointly with the other 11 chapters of our Southern California District 14, the local chapters of the Sons of the American Revolution and the Children of the American Revolution on September 22nd. Our National Society will also celebrate bells across America at 1:00 Pacific Standard Time on Monday, September 17th, proclaiming the final signing. We encourage everyone to step outside and ring a joyous bell that day. Thank you.
At this time, I’d invite Councilmember Sanchez to come forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month. This proclamation, I’d like to ask the members of the Oceanside Noche Mexicana Committee 2018 to come forward, please, along with, I believe, we have a couple of dancers. I’m not sure if they’re going to dance for us tonight, but we’ll have to all come to the event this Sunday at 1:00, 1 to 7, right here at the Oceanside Civic Center Plaza. So, the wonderful thing about our city is that we celebrate its diversity. We have several events throughout the year. We have the Samoan Cultural Celebration. We have our Phil Amm Celebration. We have Juneteenth. And we also have the Oceanside Noche Mexicana Celebration, which basically coincides with and actually begins, kicks off, National Hispanic Heritage Month. So, we do have a proclamation, and it states the following. Whereas City of Oceanside commemorates National Hispanic Heritage Month each year, beginning with Oceanside Noche Mexicana, to be held this year on September 9th, that’s this Sunday, 2018, a free community-family cultural event, held annually in September at the Oceanside Civic Center Plaza, attended by thousands of Oceanside residents. And whereas this year’s event would not take place without the wonderful and generous collaboration of NBC 7, Telemundo 20, Oceans 11, Friends of Oceanside Parks, Oceanside Public Library, Vista Community Clinic, Ballet Foclorico Tapatio de Oceanside, St. Mary’s Star of the Sea Church, Por Siempre Car Club, Education Begins in the Home, The Movement Brand, La Pela Tapatía, Gear Up, and the City of Oceanside. And whereas this year’s Oceanside Noche Mexicana major sponsor is the Louis and Carolina Sanchez Trust, a family dedicated to cultural traditions of family, community, love, and helping neighbors in need. And whereas after a blessing by Father G. of St. Mary’s Church and the Aztec dancers Calpulí Omeyocan, the event will include performances by Ballet Foclorico Tapatio de Oceanside, Mariachi Juvenil de San Diego, and other local Latino bands, singers, and dancers. A very special guest performance will be by talented singer Angelito Garcia of La Voz Kids. The event will close with a representative from the Mexican consulate who will present a reenactment of the Grito de Dolores, Cry for Independence. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated September 15th through October 15th every year, which honors the histories, cultures, arts, and contributions of American citizens and residents whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, Central and South America, and the Caribbean. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Peter Weiss, Mayor of the City of Oceanside, California, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2018, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Oceanside, issued this 5th day of September, 2018. And while we’re getting a picture here, this is something that we started 14 years ago as something to really honor our parents, our forefathers, you know, relatives that have come to make a better, a better life here and have contributed to the City of Oceanside, either through the arts, through employment, and, you know, through businesses. And it has been very, very special in that the first time that we did this, there were some of our elders who actually cried because this was something they never thought they would be able to see again. They made the commitment to be here, to work hard, to contribute to this community, and it has really been a blessing for me, as well as others on the committee, that we’ve been able to do this for the 14th, this is our 14th year. So, I’d like to give the mic over to a few of our committee members to say a few words.
Well, on behalf of my organization, Education Begins in the Home, I’m proud to be here this coming Sunday, providing free books to the youth and families of Oceanside. Please come from 1 to 7.
Hi, my name is Genevieve Wonder, and I’m here to represent the Friends of Oceanside Parks. It has been a great event, Esther. Thank you for including us in this. This is a great event for all the Hispanics and Americans alike for the City of Oceanside. We need to have diversity. We need to be united, and this is one thing that does it. Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. Please.
Hello. My name, my name is Luis Oseguera. I’m the Grupo Foclorico Tapatio of Oceanside Director, and here we have two of our dancers. And I’m in charge of entertainment, and I’m very happy to be part of this group too. And I’m very happy to say that on my part, we’re having three different categories that are dancing, my little kids, my high school kids, and my altos. And we’re talking about more than, I would say, about 70, 70 dancers. Ninety percent of my dancers are from here from Oceanside, and it’s an honor to work with kids after school. They go to my, to my classes, and I teach them how to perform, how to dance, and it’s my honor to keep those kids busy after school. Thank you.
Right, and Luis is, has really, he really, his contribution to this event is, you know, really, really big because Luis started in Crown Heights, that’s where he was living at the time when this, when this first started, and he started to give lessons to his siblings and other kids in the community to give an alternative to what was happening on the streets, the gang lifestyle. And he started in his garage, and it’s blossomed into, you know, going to other schools in North County, and he now competes professionally, his dancers, all over, all over the world. So, it’s been really exciting to have this kind of talent and performance here in Oceanside. And I have to give a very, very special thanks to Angie, my aide, who has been carrying this, you know, all year, the planning. So, thank you very much, Angie. And thank you. You’re invited. Please come this Sunday, right out here at the Civic Center, 1 to 7:00 PM. What was that?
Is there going to be food?
There’s, oh, absolutely. Food, dancing, mariachis, music. You will really, really enjoy it. Thousands of people come. And Emma, who’s coming down here, is very, very much, and her husband are very, very much part of this event because they, last year, I guess it’s been two years now, they have put together the exhibition of the cars, which you sometimes can see at Dia de los Muertos. If you’ve ever been there, they have wonderful lowrider cars, beautiful cars, and so this has very much been part of the event. So, Emma, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, so we’re looking for a very fun day out there, a lot of entertainment, and of course, the cars are a big hit. Everybody loves cars, from the youngest to the oldest, it’s a bad memory, so everybody has a story about their first car or a classic car, and the families. There’s lots of things to see, the performers. You guys are going to be doing the opening ceremony?
Yes, Emma actually does more than that. She dances.
I do a little bit of everything. Opening ceremony for Aztec ceremony, and it’s a very, it’s probably closer to authentic dancing that I have ever seen at this event. Bring, bring your families, come enjoy the day, and just watch all the entertainment. It’s not the same kind of entertainment at other events. It’s unique and very educational.
The chairman has her own car. It’s really neat.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And at this point, I would like to invite down those affiliated with the North Coastal Prevention Coalition to honor their 25th anniversary.
My name is Aaron Byzak, and I’m on the board of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition. Three of us up here, Ray Pearson, Craig Balbin, and myself, represent presidents of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition for the last 10 years. NCPC has been around for 25 years. The mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Oceanside, Carlsbad, and Vista, and we do that through community action, education, support, and collaboration. Collaboration with the many organizations that are represented up here, some more who are coming down, like the Boys and Girls Club, the Oceanside Police Department, the Oceanside City Council has been a partner on many of our efforts, and, you know, I’ve been involved for 15 years. And over the last 10 years, we’ve really emerged as a national leader on issues. And a lot of people talk about being national leaders, but literally national leaders. We, in the last 10 years, we’ve won three National Best Practice Awards, we won National Coalition of the Year. There’s about 5,000 coalitions like ours in the country, and so to win National Coalition of the Year is a very big deal. And then we’ve won two awards for the National Association of State Alcohol and Drug Abuse Directors, NASADAD, it’s a mouthful, but they give awards away for best prevention policies and programs in the country. Won one back in 2010 for marijuana prevention in particular. And just this last week, our team was in Boston, taking home a second NASADAD Award, this one very specifically for a policy that was implemented here in conjunction with the City of Oceanside related to synthetic drugs. And that was a very big deal. As you guys remember, spice and bath salts, things like that, kind of came on the scene a number of years back. We responded very quickly to that and started putting in place a number of policies and practices that we built upon over the course of years, and eventually working with the City Attorney’s Office here in Oceanside, built a policy that has dropped the number of overdoses on synthetic drugs from well over 100 to 1, which is a really incredible accomplishment. And again, it was recognized as a national best practice, and the hope is that other communities around the country will adopt a similar practice and be able to save lives in their communities. So, I just wanted to take a moment to kind of go over the last 10 years. I’ll hand it over to Craig Balbin, who is the current president of NCPC, to say just a few more things.
Thanks, Aaron. You know, being an Oceanside resident, it is absolutely my passion to make my community more safe and more healthy, and working with these coalition partners to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in Oceanside is what I’m really passionate about. For me, it’s really a personal issue as well, and for many of us that are involved, we have families that have been, who, whose lives have been impacted and really, you know, have seen significant, serious consequences when people abuse alcohol and drugs. And so, when we are involved and out in the community, I mean, this is really what drives our passion for these issues. And it’s absolutely incredible, incredible to be able to work with all of our, the variety of different partners that we have, not just in the tri-city area of Oceanside, Vista, and Carlsbad, but also south of there to San De Guido and Sanitas, all the way east to San Marcos and Escondido. And so, it’s really, it’s really great to be recognized by the City of Oceanside and really appreciate this honor, and, you know, here’s to another 25 years and more of our coalition and prevention work in the community to protect our safety and health of our residents. And also, you know, this year, I just want to recognize the young Marines have been involved and, you know, have been a really important part and helpful to the different events that we’ve put on and have really provided muscles for setting up canopies and tables and chairs. And so, you know, being able to really impact the youth in a positive way is absolutely critical to us. And so, you know, like I said, the variety of different community partners that we’re able to work with is, is really, the breadth is really wide. So, is there anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the status of labor negotiations with the Oceanside Fire Management Association and the management employees of the City of Oceanside. The Council met and gave direction. There’s no action to report under the Brown Act at this time.
Thank you.
All right. Consent calendar, items 3 through 13.
Move adoption.
Second.
No public.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
14.
Yes, item number 14 is Introduction of An Ordnance Amending Chapter 32B of the Oceanside City Code by adding subsection 32B.7E to establish a permanent development impact fee deferral program.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. I’m Megan Crooks with the Development Services Department. And this evening, I’m here to ask the City Council to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 32B by adding subsection 32B.7E to establish a permanent development impact fee deferral program. The City of Oceanside had two temporary ordinances in place during the recession, which sunset on June 30th, 2014. The City has been in conversation with the BIA, with other North County cities, to continue a permanent program. At this time, the cities of Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Carlsbad, and Sanitas, among other San Diego regional cities, all have permanent programs. California Government Code Section 66000 regulates how local jurisdictions may impose fees on development projects for the defraying of costs on, of public improvement projects. The state code does call for fees to be paid at the time of final inspection, certificate of occupancy, or release of utility. The Oceanside City Code, Chapter 32B, Article 1, establishes local procedures for imposing development impact fees. Our city code authorizes us to impose the fees prior to issuance of a building permit due to our having a five-year capital improvement program that demonstrates how we will utilize those funds within the five years. Staffs recommending a permanent program, and the fees that would be recommended for deferral requests are wastewater and water system buy-in fees, public recycled water system and lieu fees, public facilities fees, thoroughfare and traffic signal fees, parkland dedication fees, drainage fees, and inclusionary housing and lieu fees. Fees that are not recommended for a deferral request are Sandex Regional Arterial Fee, the School District Impact Fees, San Diego County Water Authority Fees, which the City doesn’t have authorization over, and the development processing fees or deposits, fees specifically imposed through a development agreement, or fees imposed by a condition of approval for a discretionary permit, which have a specified date of payment. The program includes the following steps. Requests shall be made to the city engineer no later than 45 days prior to the issuance of a building permit. A processing fee of $500 per agreement will be assessed. An applicant shall enter into a fee deferral agreement with the city to delineate payment of the deferred fees if approved. The applicant’s obligation will be secured by a lien on the project property or by an irrevocable letter of credit. Fees shall be calculated based on the applicable fee schedule set by resolution of the City Council in effect at the time of payment, not at the time of the deferral request. And the city manager is authorized to execute the agreement. Fees shall be paid by the earlier of one, the date of final inspection, or two, the date of certificate of occupancy or temporary occupancy. A utility release and installation of a water meter to serve the development shall only be made after payment in full of water and wastewater system buy-in fees. Fee deferral agreements would not be transferable to any other development project. As best management practices, the program is similar to the temporary program the City had in place between 2009 and 2014. The program is also similar to surrounding North County cities. In speaking with the surrounding cities, few applicants have made requests for deferrals in those surrounding cities. And the timeline for public improvements caused by the impact of the development will not be impacted by the program because staff still have the ability to either deny a fee deferral or to set specified dates based upon the capital improvement project plan in need for using those fees. With those considerations, staff makes the recommendation that City Council introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 32B by adding subsection 32B.7E to establish a permanent development impact fee deferral program. I’m here if you have any questions.
We have two speakers on this item, Michael McSweeney and Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I’m Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor of the San Diego Building Industry Association. First off, I want to thank the staff. We asked to meet with Deanna, and I know that she worked with Jonathan on this. We explained the why behind this, and quite frankly, you all know that development is done with borrowed funds, so if a developer is borrowing money at 10% interest to give it to the city at building permit issuance, and you’re putting it in an account earning a quarter or a half a percent, it’s not a very good use of funding. Not every developer chooses this option, but for those that do, it’s one more tool in the toolbox that can help move a project from conception to reality. Staff has done a good job. We shared with them a number of programs done in other cities. I know Jonathan, when you worked in Anaheim, they had a program. And there’s adequate protections for the city so that nobody’s going to get by with not paying fees, and then you’ll have an angry homeowner in front of council saying, “I can’t move into my house because fees didn’t get paid.” So, we’re hoping that you will approve the recommendation from staff, and I can answer any questions if you have them. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Arlene Hammerschmidt in ruralish Oceanside, your ruralish fire mountain in Oceanside. Keep it that way. My objection here primarily is the description of this ordinance as streamlining the development process when, in actuality, it is an incentive to attract development. By deferring payment of development fees to the end of a project, the applicant would save serious capital outlay and interest on construction loans. Streamlining the process would mean saving time, not saving money, fewer forms, combining steps to approval, et cetera. That would be streamlining. So, let’s call this what it really is. It’s an incentive to attract development. So, I also feel there should be a sunset in this. In state law, a lot of times, there’s a sunset for review because times change. And I’d like to recommend a sunset of four years. We have no guarantee that our current nice, positive economic situation is going to continue. I know this was instituted during the recession. The previous versions of
the description of this ordinance as streamlining the development process, when in actuality it is an incentive to attract development. By deferring payment of development fees to the end of a project, the applicant would save serious capital outlay and interest on construction loans. Streamlining the process would mean saving time, not saving money, fewer forms, combining steps to approval, et cetera. That would be streamlining. So let's call this what it really is. It's an incentive to attract development. So I also feel there should be a sunset in this. In state law, a lot of times, there's a sunset for review, because times change. And I'd like to recommend a sunset of four years. We have no guarantee that our current nice, positive economic situation is going to continue. I know this was instituted during the recession. The previous versions of this ordinance had a sunset. This policy would be, should be reviewed in four years in light of current region and city economy. Does the city still want to attract more development? Because that's what this is. This attracts development. So I appreciate your time and attention, and I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Cindy Rocco.
Honorable Mayor, council members. I ask that before you make a motion, that you consider modifying the ordinance as written with possible changes, is to, as Arlene said, not to make it permanent, because we need it in our toolbox to manage future trends and inflationary environment. We're in a robust environment, and we need to -- hang on one second. So we want to be able to have that in our toolbox, I apologize. And the other thing would be possibly asking for fifty percent upfront with the payment plan, and that it's constructed, to receive funds as work is done, from an accounting perspective. We already have the state mandated incentives for incentivizing development in this environment. The risk for us that I looked at was that we only get $500 in our pocket today, and that doesn't give us funding resources where we could use that money for other investments, whether it's unfunded capital projects, et cetera, because of the cost of a bond is going to be more interest than even the nominal rate that you may receive. Also, the risk of funding resources for a developer, even with, I think, the irrevocable letter of credit, I think there's still a certain degree of risk. And it could be an extended timeframe for the collections, so we don't have the present value of those funds in our account. And, oh, and also looking at the present value and the future value of money, and basically, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. So when you have funds in your hand today, and you can use it to defer for a capital project, it's going to be a lot less costly than trying to fund that project with the value of future dollars. So, oh, and the fees are said to be, point being, so the fees are said to be substantial to the developers. So I don't know the total funds from the fees collected, or the amount of the value, but because it's substantial to the developers, I would imagine that it's substantial to us. And that's on page two, line three of the proposed ordinance. Thank you. So I ask for some modifications or consideration of it. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
Councilmember Kern.
I want to move staff recommendation. You know, the one thing that struck me is when Megan was going through her presentation, is how many times she mentioned the word "fee." You know, fees and regulations now account for over forty percent of a cost of a house. And so anything we can do to help them out to do this. Now, we are not giving up on any of these fees. God knows, we have enough fees. But we're deferring the impact fees to when they actually have impacts. So the idea they're not going to be using the Oceanside sewer system until they occupy the house and start using the water. So the idea we've had this in place before, and other cities have made it permanent, I think we should make it permanent also. So I move staff recommendation.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Of course, I respectfully disagree in terms of impacts. I feel very strongly that new development should, as much as possible, pay for itself, because otherwise, what ends up happening is the rest of the community ends up subsidizing that construction, those new homes, that new way of life. And so our bills end up getting bigger, and/or our level of service end up going lower. So these are very, very critical fees, costs, that we end up all bearing. I understand that one of the concerns from staff is that, well, everybody else is doing it, so we have to continue to compete. And while I agree with Ms. Hammerschmidt that this is probably more attracting, attracting construction, the idea is that it's not, all construction's not bad. If it's done smart growth, if it's done close to services and close to transportation corridors, that is really good planning and development, especially if it's consistent with our general plan. I think perhaps what we might be really reacting to is, well, what about the ones that are not consistent with our general plan? I do feel that we need to be able to compete, to ensure that we continue to have construction of workforce housing. We still haven't talked about Oceanside Boulevard and our vision for that, to include both jobs, you know, construction of businesses, and also housing, because it is right along our transportation corridors. The only thing that I have concerns about is the putting off of park dedication fees, because we are so behind in updating our park fees that this kind of adds to it. So I would hope that when that finally gets before us, that that's something that we can reexamine. This is a policy. It doesn't grant a special right. It's not something that, you know, we would not be able to review at some later time if, say, it started to impact the city's ability to go forward, or that we were somehow losing funding. So this is a policy change, going from temporary to permanent. To be able, I think, more precisely to be able to compete with other cities, since everybody else seems to be doing it. So I am going to be supporting this, but I do want to include looking at this again, at least for just, for parkland dedication fees. That's something that I feel very strongly about. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. I will second Councilmember Kern's motion for staff recommendation. Do we lose money on this?
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, no, it's generally considered to be a cost-neutral program. One thing that was mentioned, I believe, during Megan's presentation is oftentimes the fees actually end up going up during the period of deferment, so that's actually a consideration as well. And one of the reasons why some developers choose not to participate, because at the end of the day, if they're deferring the fees, they run the risk of those fees going up, because the fee calculations are based on the time that they're actually collected, not at the time that they're deferred. And then, of course, we also have an administrative fee to cover staff costs associated with managing the program.
So you do have fees as you go along that are paying for some of your costs in-house?
Yes, that's correct. They're an administration fee to cover our costs.
What you outlined was the parts of building homes. You outlined that in the beginning of what will be included and what will not.
That's correct. So these are generally impact fees, but other fees, such as typical building permit fees, plan check fees, those are not part of this program. So those costs, of course, are covered upfront, because we're actually doing the work then.
Right. And I would, I would challenge people to try to build housing along Oceanside Boulevard. So I hope, I hope you're willing to do that, Councilmember Sanchez, as we go forward. That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
I have a question for staff, maybe a couple of questions. When this was in place in 2009 and 2014, through 2014, were there any issues?
Deputy Mayor Lowry and City Council, from my understanding, I wasn't part of the department at the time, but in speaking with staff, there were no issues utilizing the program. There were four total applicants that utilized it between 2009 and 2014, and all fees were paid.
And I know we just asked this, but I'm going to put it in other words. So this is not going to impact any of our fees that we're collecting. It's not going to like discount the rates anybody pays, and you said it might increase what they're paying if they delay paying instead of paying upfront. That was?
Deputy Mayor, that is correct. If the fees do go up by City Council resolution during the time between the approved request and the actual payment, then they will pay the fee that's in place at the time of payment, not at time of the agreement.
Okay, thank you. And I have a concern about the in lieu fees for affordable housing being deferred. I'm very concerned about the city's ongoing regulations that allow builder developer not to include affordable housing in their projects, unlike the Villastoria proposal, where they actually built affordable housing, and that was the first and so far only project that built the housing, rather than taking a fee. I think that if we approve this, that we should include the, that we should not defer the in lieu fee, that we should have that money come in, so we can at least evaluate what our process is, rather than having to wait fifteen years or twenty years to do a project like Mission Cove, which was many years down the line, and many lawsuits later, or actually, maybe not lawsuits, but actual technical issues on the ground there. So I'm concerned about that as well. So in summary, there have been no issues, and we only had four applicants or people who we used this for in that five or six-year period that it was in place in the past, 2009 to 2014. And we are not going to lose any income from this arrangement to defer fees, and I would like to see that we not defer the in lieu fees. But otherwise, I think this is a practical idea. Thank you.
There's no other speakers. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
I need to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Mayor, ready for that? This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending chapter thirty-two B of the Oceanside City Code by the addition of subsection thirty-two B seven, subsection E, to establish a development impact fee deferral program.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
How many on sixteen?
One. We have one speaker on item number sixteen, Barbara Gordon. Barbara Gordon? Oh, yes.
Thank you for letting me speak. Like California, Oregon has good climate for pot growing, which has resulted in an oversupply of pot in their state. Oregon growers must now notify the state regarding their harvest because of the concern of the diversion of their product. Oregon's new harvest notification policy is the first of this kind among the states that have legalized marijuana, and is intended to ensure legal pot growth in Oregon is not being transported out of state or diverted to the black market. In an article on September second in the UT, it goes on to say that pot growers in Oregon have an oversupply of pot and are desperate to unload their crops, which are now worth half of what they used to be. Oregon's pot market has struggled for months with they have too much pot. Their Attorney General, Williams, has pressured the state to tighten the rules and to crack down on growers who may be diverting their supply to the black market. The sheriff in southern Oregon, where the county's most affected by the growing sites, he cites the vocal concern of lack of resources to deal with this issue. Like Oregon, California also has an oversupply of pot in the state. Diverting to the black market or illegal transportation to other states are all points, it all points to the lack of oversight with this industry. Pesticides and bacteria have been found in twenty percent of the legal pot tested in California already. The amount of money and resources it will take to monitor, track of this industry and these products can be overwhelming. These are the kind of problems that will continue, we'll have with pot in California. It is a big concern to many of us, and I hope it's a concern to this council. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
I'll go to seventeen. I've put out my recommendations for appointments for the various commissions. I would like to make an adjustment on the Police and Fire Commission, and that would be to move Kim Stone from alternate two to regular, and then appoint Joe Travers to alternate two. Other than that, I would move approval of the balance.
No public.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Eighteen. Deputy Mayor? Councilmember Kern?
I signed it because Chuck asked me to.
Okay. So I'm on the board of Sandag, and Sandag sends us a lot of material to review, and they sent something that I could actually relate to, which was like animation. And I watched the video at least three times, and I posted it on my Facebook page, and that's what we're going to watch today and discuss it. When I posted it, people had objections to some of the things that were depicted there, but I pointed out that they weren't seeing everything, that there were electric bicycles and electric autonomous buses and those kinds of things. So I asked Sandag staff to do a presentation on this, and how did I wind up with you?
Are you seating the floor to me, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'm seating the floor to you.
Thank you, sir. I want to welcome my friend and colleague, Marissa Mangan, from Sandag, who's joined us this evening. Mayor, council members, I'm Russ Cunningham with the City's Planning Division. We really thank you for the opportunity to spotlight this collaborative effort and introduce the mobility hub concept to the Oceanside community. In bringing this concept to life through the visual simulation that you'll see in a few moments, Sandag has provided the city with a valuable tool for discussion, analysis, and public outreach in support of future forward planning and capital improvement projects in the city. This visual sim provides a glimpse of what might, what we might see with enhanced connectivity in Oceanside. I'm going to leave it to Marissa to provide the details on the mobility hub concept and the visual simulation, but I first want to extend staff's appreciation to Marissa and the Sandag team for choosing the Oceanside Transit Center and the surrounding area as the regional prototype for the mobility hub. We think they made an excellent decision, an excellent choice, given OTC's vital role in linking coastal North County to employment centers and other destinations to the north, south, and east. Our city has eight regionally-designated smart growth opportunity areas, mostly along or within the radius of our Sprinter stations. All of these have the potential to develop into mobility hubs that offer Oceanside's residents and workforce an array of convenient and cost-effective transportation options, options that complement the rail and bus service that exists, and address the so-called first mile-last mile conundrum that many of our commuters face in suburban environments like ours. So the vis sim should help us reimagine these areas and explore how they might better serve the mobility needs of our community. Traffic engineer David DePiro and I had the pleasure of working with the Sandag team on this project. We found Marissa and her colleagues to be very attentive, very responsive to staff input, very sensitive to local conditions, and very aware that the mobility hub is not a one-size-fits-all template. It's really a flexible concept that can be adapted to unique environments. So I'll turn the lectern over to Marissa. I'm going to discuss one slide with you, and then I'll be available for any questions you have about staff's involvement and how this concept can assist us in our forward planning efforts. Marissa?
Thanks, Russ. Before we show you all the sim, I wanted to slip in some quick background about the mobility hub concept in general, and how this sim is one of many deliverables that we just recently completed as part of our Sandag Regional Mobility Hub Strategy. We had first introduced the mobility hub concept in our 2015 regional plan. This illustration we created in This illustration we created in-house to show how a lot of different services, technologies, and amenities can converge at a high-frequency transit station. We show a lot of walking and biking improvements, a wide range of shared mobility services like car share, bike share, razor scooter share, moped scooter share, micro transit or shuttle services, all of those things that help connect to and from a high-frequency service like either the Sprinter or the Coaster here in North County. In addition to that, we show a lot of other services like mobile retail and package delivery that help bring a convenience or an amenity to you so that one wouldn't need to drive alone to complete that type of errand. They could do it all within the area of a hub. This depiction is admittedly very robust, but we're trying to show all of the different types of services and amenities that could exist very close to a transit station when you do have the supporting land uses and density to go along with it. And as I'll describe, the mobility hub concept does, serves to enhance access beyond just first last mile and proves that some of these features can exist even a couple of miles beyond the station to help folks make connections. What's important to know about the mobility hub concept is that whether or not someone is choosing or needing to use transit for their trip that particular day, they can still have all of these different mobility options available to them to move around the community. This graphic is very simple, but I like to show how we like to think about the various access sheds within the mobility hub concept, thinking about certain services and amenities that could be sighted either within a five-minute walk, a five-minute bike, or a five-minute drive. So really trying to hone in on the fact that these services do extend beyond the first last mile as we've been traditionally thinking about connections. And if Russ, you want to just quickly make some comments about Oceanside's recent efforts?
Sure. So Mayor and council members, as you know, we've embarked on a fairly ambitious forward planning effort. These are some of the projects that we've undertaken and all of these projects address mobility as a, as a key consideration. So when we talk about the Coast Highway Vision and Strategic Plan and the efforts to implement that through the corridor study, we're talking about a project that's really premised on smart growth as a way to revitalize the Coast Highway Corridor. And it's very much focused on expanding multimodal transportation opportunities for our residents and our visitors and our workforce. And the mobility hub simulation that you're going to see, I think, really illustrates what we can potentially achieve within that corridor. As you know, people are implementing the vision now. We're seeing redevelopment, we're seeing infill adjacent to the Transit Center. That's bringing in the rooftops and the people to create demand for transit and types of facilities, the types of amenities that you would have in a mobility hub. You know, we're updating the general plan, we're in the first phase of that effort. The economic development element, that's part of this first phase, looks at ways we can improve access to the city for workers and for visitors. The mobility hub helps to do that. It, I think, is a way to expand our hospitality sector here in Oceanside by giving visitors another way, perhaps a number of different ways to get to Oceanside other than the private automobile. And with respect to the energy and climate action element and the CAP or Climate Action Plan that goes along with that, we're looking to reduce VMT, vehicle miles traveled and the emissions that go along with that, and also promote low emission and zero emission vehicles. And you'll see both of those efforts manifested in the mobility hubs.
One of the other deliverables we created was Mobility Hub Features Catalog. It's meant to be a tool for local municipalities and transit agencies as they adopt and develop new plans and projects, pilot new ideas. We summarize all of the various mobility hub features based on those access shed areas, some of those services like real-time travel information and passenger loading zones that you may see right in the immediate area surrounding a transit station, pedestrian and bicycle amenities that are going to extend a little bit further beyond, safer crosswalks, safer walkways, plentiful and secure bike parking, bike share depending on whether you go with a dock or dockless version if ever in the future, trying to cite those things strategically so that folks have an option to use a bike to get where they need to go for shorter trips. And then a wide range of motorized services and amenities, anything from dedicated transit lanes to car share vehicles, micro transit services, neighborhood electric vehicles, which are also the same as low-speed vehicles that can be used as either personally-owned, shared fleet, or shuttle services, and smart parking solutions and flexible curb space. That's something I like to highlight because as we, as we grow more and develop more, it's really hard to find or to designate curb space for every single use. And as you're trying to introduce more of these types of services, cities have to start thinking about how to be a little bit more flexible in certain areas with regards to who has access to that curb space. Perhaps it's a shuttle service at certain times of the day, a car share vehicle at another time, and a mobile retail service in the evening. Support services and amenities are the items in orange, wayfinding, package of delivery, mobile retail services, anything from food trucks to mobile barbers, mobile dry cleaning, and a universal transportation account, which is the kind of single app we're all trying to work towards to find, book, and pay for all of these types of services. As Russ mentioned, Oceanside was one of eight of the prototype sites that Sandag identified as part of our strategy. We selected Oceanside for a variety of reasons, most importantly, the fact that it's an interregional transit center up at the north end of our region. It does receive a lot of, or experience a lot of travel activity both by both residents, employees, and visitors. So each of these prototypes received a four-page profile sheet. I have copies of the Oceanside profile sheet with me today that I can leave behind. And what we've done is mapped out those access sheds around the Ocean, Oceanside Transit Center, provided some demographic and mode share information, and also the last page includes the whole set of recommended mobility hub features that we felt were suitable for this community context. And last, before we do show you the sim, I wanted to mention that we developed two memos specific to implementation and equity. In the implementation memo, it's a resource for our local jurisdictions and transit agencies to reexamine any current planning policies or planning documents to see how this mobility hub concept could be incorporated, trying to take a closer look at allocating space for these hub features, especially public rights of way, but also asking any developers to integrate these solutions into their projects. Data sharing is a huge piece as more of these services are provided by private operators. We need to make sure that the public agencies are collecting data to make informed decisions about future planning efforts and monitoring things like vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. And advice on entering into some of these public-private partnerships because it's going to be important to lean on the private sector to provide these types of services and amenities in the situation where a public agency just can't do it. With regards to equity, we've summarized some benefits, challenges, and best practices about implementing these features so that populations that are either low-income, minority, or senior can benefit. So I'll play the sim. It's about two minutes. I'm hoping this is the version without music and if you don't mind, I'll kind of call out some features that are within each scene. This is a map showing seven locations that we picked for the sim and we'll go through all of them shortly. First location being OTC platform, showing how package delivery station, space allocated for bike share vehicles, mobile retail service, real-time travel information, and a gentleman responsibly holding his personal razor scooter at the platform can all coexist. This is the Tremont entrance where we have real-time parking information, dedicated curb space for micro transit or shuttle service, and we have a Camp Pendleton shuttle pulling up, bike share vehicles heading in, and moped scooters heading in as well, along with an electrified neighborhood electric vehicle. Mission at Nevada, which has already experienced some complete streets improvements, is showing a Zipcar vehicle pulling out, moped scooters in the front, electrified breeze buses, EV charging stations on the curb, more moped scooters, an autonomous vehicle shuttle pulling through. And Mission at Barnes in front of the New Health and Human Services Agency, we're showing some wireless vehicle charging in the left-hand turn lane, more micro transit services pulling in at the curb, bike share vehicle or bike share bikes parked in front of the building. South Coast, South Coast Highway just below the Sprinter line is showing one of those mobile retail services along with dedicated scooter share parking, autonomous vehicles, and a nice area for larger shuttles to pull in and pick up folks that are patronizing those establishments. These iconic Roberts cottages can also fit into the mobility hub concept where we have a green painted lane for bikes, hoverboards and other rideables, as I like to call them, neighborhood electric vehicle shuttle pulling through. And finally, the Oceanside Harbor where we've maintained all the land uses there, enhanced the pedestrian crossing with a flashing beacon, show some tidy bikes, some tidy bike share bikes parked there, an interactive kiosk for someone to plan their trip, and more of the autonomous electric low-speed shuttles. The sim and all of the other deliverables are posted to our sdforward.com site if you want to learn more. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
No public on this item? Yes, Cindy Rock.
You can just have a seat over there where Russ is. Thank you. Or, you know, in the next seat, anyway.
I just wanted to say that I think that we should look at rejuvenating the Oceanside Boulevard plan, even if it's dovetailed or tiered in because of all the transit hubs that are there. I think that would make good sense. And then the other thing is to consider, just in my own personal experience, without a car, it's with the delivery services and all these things, it's like you're, you know, prisoner in your own house. You can't just say, oh, I'm going to go do this, I'm going to go do that. So you're locked in. Plus to walk to, I have to walk to the grocery store, I can't go to my pharmacy or my bank and it takes forever to go on the bus. Also, my cost of goods is higher because I need to go to local vendors or local markets where the markup is, the cereal is almost $6 versus $2 or $3 in Walmart, which you need a vehicle. And then the other thing is, I can't, you know, I can't go to Costco. I mean, I don't know, Uber might have an SUV, but I can't go do my regular Costco gig where I just, you know, pile it all in there. I haven't been to Costco in, you know, until I can hitch a ride, but, one second. Oh, and then Uber is very expensive if you don't catch the bus or mass transit. And when I was just in New York, I went from, I was up in Westchester and I needed to go to Brooklyn, so I'm like, okay, I can catch the train and go to Grand Central and then take the subway, blah, blah, blah. And then, or get to Grand Central or then Uber to Brooklyn. But because of the convenience, you know, even though it's very rapid over there, but not at, at about 11 o'clock at night. So then I had to order an Uber and then as I'm doing that, it says they can't locate a car where I am. And then the price went to double the original amount for me to get to Brooklyn. I mean, I did it, but obviously the train and subways would have been much more cost-effective. But, you know, the outlay and the cost of transportation for me is pretty high, you know, overtime especially. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to share that especially with you on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern?
Thank you. Great presentation. I thank the Deputy Mayor for bringing that forward and it seems like it will probably affect District One a lot more than District Two because I didn't see anything in District Two. But my one question is, and I've seen this down in San Diego, and the problem they're having with the dockless bikes, that the idea they're almost become litter now. And hopefully that, you know, these are showing bikes that are docked. So is that kind of the plan? You know, the idea of you guys working your way through that is, of what a good model is? Because I don't think the dockless bike plan is really, you know, they become litter, you know, obviously. So I'll let you respond to that. That was the only thing that I saw in this video that I really wanted to make sure of that we don't, I don't want to go down that path. Russ, sorry, I'll turn on the mic. Don't worry about it because I do the same thing.
In the sim, we were actually showing dockless bikes parked in designated bike share parking areas.
That's not going to happen.
So, so in this, that's just for the purposes of the concept to show how they could be responsibly parked. With the situation in San Diego, I will mention that, I don't want to speak on behalf of that city, but they are now starting to ponder some policy and regulations that they could put in place after the fact that some of these dockless vendors have been allowed to operate. I'm holding a meeting at the end of this month surrounding regional dockless vehicle or micro mobility coordination amongst all the cities in the region so we can see how we can better align with policies, practices, data sharing, responsible parking, outreach and education. So that kind of discussion on a regional level will be happening. I don't think there's a wrong or a right way to deploy bike share, kind of to get to your question. It just depends on how a city may negotiate with the vendor, where designated parking areas could be. Perhaps they could come up with a hybrid type of model for, for a city where it's not all going to be dockless and they're not allowing the bikes to be parked wherever a user wants. You could work with the vendor to try to designate areas. And the example I bring up is that's exactly what San Diego State has done with a dockless provider OFO. They've identified about 30 different designated parking areas despite the fact that there are no bike share stations.
And the one thing that I saw that was missing is something to do with the airport. The idea that even if it's bicycles, the idea that people would fly in, we have the bicycle trail along the river, that people can fly in a plane, a general aviation plane, dock or dockless bikes, they get on the bike, they can ride down the river trail and they'd be downtown and then they could ride back. So, you know, just something along that line. So, you know, the idea that, I know we incorporate a lot of rail here and a lot of cars, but we do have an airport here to consider about how we integrate general aviation with some of this mobility because, you know, tourists come from all over. Right? So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry?
Thank you. Thank you both for doing a very comprehensive, prompt, brief presentation. I have a question for Russ. So can you tell me about, you mentioned in your introductory materials, one of the bullet points was our existing general plan. Can you tell me how old our existing general plan is?
Deputy Mayor, what I can tell you is that the city has never conducted a comprehensive general plan update. We have added general plan elements as the state has required them, so we've essentially piecemealed what constitutes the general plan today. Some of the elements are, well, not quite as old as me, but some are close to 40 years old. The land use element, which in some ways is the hub of the general plan, is, has celebrated its, I think it's 32nd birthday.
So, some of the issues that you mentioned around future planning means we have to replace some of the parts of our current general plan? Climate Action Plan would replace some of those elements?
The first phase that we've undertaken introduces two new elements to the general plan and we hope, and we're quite confident, that these two new elements will provide policy direction for the updating of our existing elements, should the council give us direction to pursue that second phase of the update process.
So we want to comply with state regulations, so are we moving forward on that? Now, now that you're here, I'm putting you on the spot, sorry.
Not a problem. We're certainly moving forward with this first phase. We're getting very close to having materials to put in front of you and our community. And again, it will be a determination of city management and, and this body as to where we go after this first phase, but I think we'll be very well positioned to undertake a second phase of the update.
Okay. And then the elements that you used in this PowerPoint presentation, are those on the sdforward.com or were those specific to Oceanside? Where can we see the first part of this presentation that you did? I have posted the video on my Deputy Mayor Facebook page, so it's visible there, but I don't know about the materials that you brought in that were those, the panels that you introduced at the beginning.
So we have a webpage for the general plan update that provides information on the status of the economic development element, the energy and climate action element, and the climate action plan. Materials related to the mobility hub live on the Sandag site.
All of the deliverables are posted on that site. I'm also happy we can send a copy of this PowerPoint through your staff.
That'd be great.
To post.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Odegaard, you apparently want to say something?
If the Mayor will allow me just a minute. Thank you.
Please.
I didn't, beautiful presentation, but I saw-
I didn't, beautiful presentation, but I saw a couple of elements missing. Being a human space, landscaping is very important, as well as pets. And I didn't see any symbols for that, and I think those are important elements that need to be incorporated in any kind of a place-making proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Item nineteen is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, amending Articles Four, Thirteen, and Thirty-Six of the 1992 zoning ordinance to regulate commercial medical cannabis facilities.
No, no public on this item?
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, three-two. Sanchez, Feller, no.
Are there any general council member comments?
Yes. Thank you. Gosh, it went away. I wanted to share some comments about Willie Little, who passed away August 31st. And he, he was someone that I got to know, I want to say, 20 years ago. He passed away August 31st at 83 years old. He was born in Vaughan, Mississippi during the 30s, at a time when it was very, very difficult terms of civil rights in African-Americans. He joined the Marines and was in the Marines for 20 years, did two tours in Vietnam, and was hurt the last time that he was in Vietnam and actually received a Purple Heart. Willie, thereafter, well, actually, he settled in Oceanside about 61 years ago, married his childhood sweetheart, Mahalia, and lived in Oceanside, worked for the U.S. Postal Service, was a postal worker for over 10 years, and was very, very active in his union with the Retired Military Association, with civil rights, very much, very active with the NAACP, with the Democratic Party, and with his community. Willie was someone that really, really pushed the envelope whenever he saw something that needed to be righted, a situation. He was honored by the city twice during his time. Recently, I want to say that I was really happy to be able to have seen him within the last couple of weeks at a meeting and also at home with his wife. He is survived by his wife, Mahalia, and also by Willie Junior and his daughter. They did lose a son a few years ago. So I'd like to, with the permission of the council, close a journ in his name. He really gave a lot to City of Oceanside. He always took the time to take someone by the hand and teach, and he also was a great listener. So Willie Little, 83, a great life. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Sanchez. And I would like to add that the viewing is Thursday, which is tomorrow, from four to eight at Eternal Hills, and the services are Friday at 10 o'clock at Eternal Hills as well. So with that, if we could please give a moment of silence for Mr. Willie Little. And we'll stand adjourned until Wednesday, September 19th at 3:30. Thank you.